Good evening. The regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors, February 28, 2018, is called to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Thank you. Ms. Manser?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Oats?
Present.
Mr. Fiero? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Morris?
Present.
Dr. Hartsfeld? Ms. Robinson?
Here. Amy Hartsfeld and John Fiero have requested an excused absence. If there isn't any objection, we would like to excuse their absence. Their absence is excused. Is there any objection to approve the agenda? If not, the agenda is approved. We have five persons that have indicated that they would like to address the board this evening. Public comments are regulated to three minutes per speaker. The Chair recognizes Susan Stocking of DAC, Susan Stocking, to speak about DAC. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Bedell, and to the members of the board. I'm here to, this evening, to provide an update from the District Advisory Committee, or the DAC as we call it. The DAC addresses school issues and concerns and allows parents to network, share ideas, and solve problems cooperatively. We've had three very productive general meetings this year so far. When we met in October, our parent staff and community members discussed the various parent organizations across the district. Within the district, we have PTAs, PTOs, SACS, Link Advisory Councils, and other parent organizations. We had the opportunity to learn what parent community engagement looks like in schools across the district and how these schools communicate engagement opportunities. Meeting attendees heard from Samara Crawford Herrera, Community Partnership Advocacy and Engagement Manager, and Yantasia Patrick, Parent and Family Engagement Specialist with the district. Ms. Herrera and Ms. Patrick have been invaluable resources for the DAC Executive Committee this year. Our second general meeting in December featured an education panel discussing ways to move the district forward on two key goals: Providing KCPS parent education opportunities and working to improve KCPS student performance. Moderated by Yantasia Patrick, the panel included Kevin Masters, Dr. Louis Cordoba, Kokeethia Hill, and KCPS parent liaison Angela Teterin. Engaging and empowering parents is essential for student success. It's also important for our district's success because empowered parents and community members can help advocate for their schools, the district, and for KCPS legislative priorities, which currently include funding pre-K education, stopping tax dollars from leaving education funding sources, and leveling the playing field between charters and public schools. At our meeting in March, we discussed the four levels of parent engagements, which include active, involved, engaged, and empowered. Parent and community members from across the district discussed why they were involved, as well as their engagement successes and challenges. We also presented feedback and follow-up that resulted from issues raised during our education panel in December. At our next meeting on April 18, the DAC will hold officer elections. Over the summer, we will be reviewing our bylaws, creating our strategy for the 2018-19 school year, and developing a succession plan to ensure continuity for future DAC boards. Dr. Bedell, you've said before that improving is hard. To improve implies intent, consideration, and coordination. The DAC is committed to improving parent engagement at all schools and to build strong relationship with family and community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Ayesha Thompson to speak about the Women of Warriors mentoring program.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell and board. My name is Ayesha Thompson, and I am standing on behalf of Women of Warriors. Women of Warriors is a nonprofit organization that mentors at-risk teens. And I started Women of Warriors in October at De La Salle Education Center. And with that, the young ladies has been not-so-good students, but their grades were Elfs and Ds and Elfs. And so now, working with those young ladies, as of today, those young ladies are AB students and are on track with school. And so I had gave Mrs. Nicole some information to pass out about Women of Warriors. And just briefly about me, what started the program was because I graduated from De La Salle Education Center back in 96. And so I am a graduate of Kansas City School District. And when I was in school, I attended De La Salle at the age of 16, and I just didn't have no one to assist me, to encourage me that I was gonna be okay. And so I wanted to go back to where it started for me. And that was at De La Salle to motivate, empower the young girls, to let them know that you can to make it. And so I gave brochures and business cards and everything. So I just want to allow Women of Warriors to be a part of the Kansas City School District outside of De La Salle Education Center. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Katina Taylor to discuss restoring hopes and dreams to a generation. Okay. I did see her, so we'll come back if the board recognizes Dr. Barbara Johnson to discuss Moore Square Restore These Practices. Welcome.
Good evening. I am Dr. Barbara Johnson, and I am with the Education Task Force for Moore Square, the Metro Organization for Racial and Economic Equity. First of all, thank you for giving me an opportunity to address the board. Back in January, Dr. Bedell met with myself, Mrs. Josh McGatha, and Mrs. Michelle Rice, other members of the task force. We had requested the meeting to discuss the issue of restorative practices for the Kansas City, Missouri School District. Mrs. McGatha and I are retired teachers and administrators in the district, and Mrs. Rice has children presently in the district. Restorative practices is viewed as an alternative to the typical punish-suspend method of discipline that has been historically used and which have also found to disproportionately punish students of color. As you know, the state of Missouri leads the nation in suspension of children of color from school, and Kansas City in particular adds greatly to those numbers. We do know the district is working hard to reduce those numbers. However, we feel that restorative practices, if implemented properly, will not only reduce the numbers, but help improve student achievement. When we met with Dr. Bedell, we had a prepared list of questions we wanted feedback on. Among the things we asked him was, does the district have a model they are using for restorative practices? What schools are participating and what parameters are being used to measure success? We asked, how does your plan for restorative practices, if there is one, compare with your plan for trauma-sensitive center schools? We discussed with Dr. Bedell how restorative practices are a collaborative effort that involves creating relationships between all the stakeholders and our community, is a major stakeholder in the district. How does the district allow for community involvement in the schools, and what type of feedback or follow-up is being done to let the community know that they are welcome and needed? We asked Dr. Bedell if the district would commit to implementing a restorative practice plan similar to the ones used in San Francisco, Denver, or Philadelphia, cities that have had great success with their restorative practices programs, starting the 2018-2019 school year. And lastly, and most importantly, we asked that working in tandem with a restorative practice plan, will the school district commit to no expulsion or out-of-school suspension of children from pre-K through 3rd grade, starting 2018-2019? And expanded to the 4th through 8th grade 2019 to 2020 school year, and expanding further to the 9th through 12th grade 2020 to 2021 school year, except in the cases of violent or severe drug or alcohol offenses. At the end of our meeting, Dr. Bedell asked that we schedule another meeting with him before the end of this school year, so that he, so that we can discuss, or he can discuss, further ideas on restorative practices in the district. He also indicated he would be willing to consider a restorative practices program piloted in at least one elementary school during the 2018-2019 school year. After our meeting with Dr. Bedell, our expectations are quite high. We would like for you, as a board this evening, to commit to support Dr. Bedell, Moore Square, and the Kansas City, Missouri community in this effort to implement restorative practices in the Kansas City, Missouri School District.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Tom Love to discuss, are we improving? Mr. Love?
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad to be here. I was here Valentine's Day. You know, it's kind of hard to explain to my wife, but I'm thankful I was here. We found out that there's a lot of people in the pipeline. Thirty-nine percent of these 3rd graders are already two years behind from last year, which means they're reading at a 1st grade level or below, and they're getting promoted to 4th grade. That's kind of scary to me. I was looking at a study down in Texas a number of years ago, and this university did some research on how many people in prison have a problem with dyslexia. Forty-eight percent, they said. I knew from years ago, when I was a state representative, that 75% of the people that are, at that time, in the early 90s, were functionally illiterate. They hadn't completed 4th grade reading level. I'm just wondering if we're going to begin using Title I funds to provide a master's degree reading specialist to take care of the dyslexia issue? The money's there. I plan on going back up to Washington DC to try to make that happen at the state level to get that targeted, because that's what it was meant for, is for at-risk of going to prison or being, you know, just having all kinds of problems in life. I wanted to share something else with you. Julie Johnson's the attorney for the district, and she mentioned that we only have one 6th grader last year that was a Senate Bill 319 student. Do any of you know what Senate Bill 319 is? Good. Well, that's anyone who's two years or more behind. So last year, we had one 6th grader, according to the information she received and passed on to me through this email, that was a Senate Bill 319. Now, that's over a third of the students in the district are two years or more behind in 6th grade, and 39% in 3rd grade. But how can you say that's one in 6th grade? How can you say that there's only five in 5th grade? Five students, I'm sorry, nine, nine in 5th grade. Sorry, I misread that, I don't have my glasses on. Nine students in 5th grade. Do you believe that? I don't believe it. Not when I looked at what was on the screen, that's two weeks ago. I took a picture of the screen. I mean, it's, it was 39.1% of 3rd graders were two years or more behind, 34.8% of 4th graders were two years or more behind, 33% of 5th graders, and 33.7% of 6th graders.
Thank you.
They're supposed to receive, they're supposed to receive help.
Thank you, Mr. Love.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Katina Taylor to discuss restoring hopes and dreams to a generation. Welcome, Ms. Taylor. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hopefully, he's pulling it up. All right. So first of all, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak before you all. Thank you also for the recent passage of the partnership framework. I think it gives Dr. Bedell and his team certainly an objective way to assess potential partnerships, which Dreams KC hopefully will eventually possibly be a partnership that you all have. So of course, many of you know me, Katina Taylor, product of KCPS, native Kansas City, and started my education career here in Kansas City and have gone on to be an advocate and educator in many different facets in the community. But I wanted to talk to you tonight about Dreams KC. Of course, some of you individually have heard about it. I wanted to formally present it to you all as a collective body. Dreams KC certainly is a whole-child model, school model, that we are looking to partner and develop in partnership, of course, with the district, going into a school within a school model via contract. And we focus on a very comprehensive approach, which includes blended learning, project-based learning, open and flexible classroom spaces, authentic parent engagement, gender-based classrooms, wraparound services for the entire family, and certainly culturally relevant and responsive pedagogy. And I will, you know, as we continue on down this road, having conversations and things like that, which have been going on for several years now, actually. I'm gonna talk with Jerry Kidsey, Daryl Davis, several times, then, of course, went to Dr. Bedell, and then Dr. Bedell, of course, brought a member of his team onboard to continue the conversation. So I've been very persistent in building this out, and we've ran through pilots and things like that. We do look at the whole child, meaning that we seek to develop their academic, professional, personal, and entrepreneurial competencies, as well as their civic competencies. So we are looking at them evolving into whole, functional, responsible, contributing citizens in our community and beyond. So again, I said that it'd be a school within a school. As I talked with Dr. Bedell and his team, I said, look, we want to go into a struggling school that is looking for a way in which to turn it around. And we don't want to go into Lincoln or Board of Stars, some of those schools that are already excelling, that doesn't prove our model out. So we are looking to develop, like I said, this partnership, go into an existing school and work right alongside of the fabulous administrators that are already doing great work, but push them to do even more and better work, and eventually, hopefully, expand so that we can impact the entire district. And again, so far, we've had two pilots, a total of 13 weeks, where we've impacted 30 students, and we continue to do some additional piloting so that you all can see our data and see that it is actually very promising for the students that we serve. So I just wanted to share that with you all, and we will continue to actually have conversations. We'll come before you and provide additional information.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. I want to thank all of our speakers this evening for coming to address the board. For the presentation of this evening's revenue and expenditures report, the Chair recognizes Board Treasurer Matthew Oats.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So this would be our monthly financial report as of the end of January. So we'll just kind of hop right into it. Looking at our top portion, which are our revenues, one thing that I want to take a look at here first on our total revenue is that for the year, we're at $161 million compared to $163 million last year. And I just want to take a look here that we're, we have spent, or we have received about 71% of our expected revenues, though we're only 58% of the way through this fiscal year. Our local revenue is at $141, almost $142 million this year. State revenue is trending about the same as last year. It's a little bit ahead, and that gap is due to our pre-K, our first payment for our pre-K ADA. So if you remember, the state has, will start paying for pre-K based on our weighted average daily attendance. So that's based on our school year 2016-2017 numbers. If you look at our federal, we are behind last year, so we're at $11 million this year compared to $21.5 million this, or excuse me, $21.5 million last year. And that variance is just due to timing of payments. So have here that we're expecting those payments to arrive in February and March, and so in future expenditure reports, you'll be able to see that. Going down bottom to our expenditures, for the most part, our expenditures are right on course with last year, if you see there at the bottom. Our total expenditures are $113 million this year versus $112 million last year, so pretty much right on pace. Couple of things to look at there is just our support services. So we're at $25.5 million this year versus $23 million last year, and that's due to the cost of deployment for our student devices under the technology plan. And then if we look down at our plant services, which is trending about the same, one thing we want to note there is that even though we had incurred a lot of cost in our plant services this year for the effort for bringing the custodial staff back in-house and back as KCPS employees, that a lot of our construction needs were being used and spent on, in the COP bond debt. So it's kind of deferred the cost to us. And then finally, on this, our debt service, so we're at $2.6 million this year versus $1.9 million last year. And that's just due to the timing of payments on these long-term debts. So if we take a look at our next page, again, it's our pie graph that we always like to see where the money comes from. Our local revenue still is the biggest part of that, at 78% federal, state, and county. Follow that. If we take a look at our next page, it's where the money goes. So as you guys see there, about 55% of this pie is spent on either direct classroom costs or support or other instruction costs for the district. So finally, if we look at our pie graph, so I know in the past, we have our blue line, which is our revenues, and our red line is that are expenditures, and it's always a good thing when your blue line is above your red line. And so as you guys recall, we begin the school year below that red line up until our local revenue started coming in. So now, you see us at, above the blue line, excuse me, above the red line for this year, and it's our expectation that we stay there for the rest of the remainder of the school year. So at this point, do we have any questions at all?
Thank you, Mr. Oats, for your presentation. Do we have any ad hoc committees that wish to report? Board Member Wolfsey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to remind everybody, out on the table, we have, our next board meeting will be on the road, and this one will be at Knott's Elementary on March 14. So plan on meeting us out there. The reception for the general public begins around 5:30, and the actual general meeting is at 6:30, but we hope to see you guys there.
The next item of business is a report of the Superintendent. The Chair recognizes Superintendent Dr. Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This moment, this month, we have our video highlight on community conversations that started in January.
We are KCPS.
Public engagement is an ongoing focus for Kansas City Public Schools. Strategic Priority 5, in Pillar B of the 2018-2023 Strategic Plan, calls for KCPS to invite the perspectives and embrace the diverse voices of stakeholders from across the community. In that spirit, Superintendent Mark Bedell and his leadership team hosted a series of community conversations in each of the four geographic zones in KCPS, starting in January and continuing into March. The community conversations were planned and executed by the Department of Communications and Community Engagement to meet three main objectives. First, these events are an opportunity for Dr. Bedell to share the new strategic plan. That includes our vision, mission, and core beliefs, the goals and measures of student success, and the four pillars and 12 strategic priorities. Dr. Bedell was also able to focus on making sure parents and caregivers understand the critical importance of having every child at school, ready to learn, every day classes are in session. Second, Dr. Bedell used the community conversations to review the feedback he collected during his Listen and Learn Tour in 2017, and to talk about the progress KCPS is making to meet the needs identified by our stakeholders. Finally, each community conversation was formatted to address questions, concerns, and significant issues for the people who live and send their children to the schools in each specific zone. The Central Zone Meeting included a discussion about a new grading system for schools being developed by Missouri's Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The South Zone Meeting included a presentation about the Board of Directors' new KCPS Education Collaboration Framework and Process. The Northeast Zone Event included translators in several different languages and information about community services for households whose primary language is something other than English. The final event for this round of community conversations will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on Tuesday, March 6, at the Kansas City Public Library Northeast Branch, which is located at 6,000 Wilson Road. All members of the public are encouraged to attend. The turnout and response has been excellent at all three of the community conversations held so far. Hundreds of stakeholders have been given vital information about our plans and progress, and they have been able to provide valuable feedback as KCPS continues to strive to meet the needs of the community.
Madam Chair, that concludes the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Item 3.01, the Chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration is requesting that the board take action on the MARK Delegate Agency Agreement and SF424B Assurance Form for Head Start. This is our annual acceptance of funds for, of the federal grant that is utilized to help fund our Woodland and Richardson Centers.
Are there any questions? Okay, it would now be in order to have a motion for, to approve this proposal?
I motion to approve item 3.01, 018S002073, MARK Delegate Agency Agreement and SF424B Assurance Form.
It is moved to second to approve the agreement with the Mid-America Regional Council. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing no debate, this will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond yes, those opposed will respond no. The Secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Moore, Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfeld? Ms. Robinson?
Yes. There's a majority in favor, and the agreement is approved. The Chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present item 3.02.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, the administration is requesting that the board take action on the approval of the FY18 Comprehensive Budget Amendment 1, and we will have Ms. Quinley here at the podium.
Good evening. Before we get into these, I want to say to you that Ms. Thompson and Ms. Armento, who's in the room, hiding in the back, do a lot of work for these budget amendments. I've never actually seen an amendment document like what you've had in your package the last two weeks to look at. The level of detail, they basically recreated the original budget document. So a lot of work goes into that and certainly gives you all the detail you could have. We want to quickly look at the summary page of what we have in this budget document. So we're looking at the operating grants and child nutrition funds collectively and combined here. The column on the left shows you the originally adopted budget. The center column is the amendment that we're requesting tonight, and the third column is the change in between those two. So you see that revenues are increasing by $21.7 million and expenditures by $21.3. The largest amount of variance or increase in those revenues, local revenues are increasing just over $11 million, largely related to the reassessment AVs that we shared with you when we set the tax rate in September, statewide sales tax increases, and then some local grant carryovers. The state revenues are $1 million, again, similar to what Mr. Oats said earlier relating to increased ADA, partly related to the fact we're now getting pre-K ADA. And then $9.1 million in federal funding rounds those out. That is really allocation of the federal grants title, the title programs, homeless and Head Start Grant that Dr. Bedell just asked you to authorize. In the expenditure section, that $21.3 million, 10.5 of that is for additional instructional expense, 7.1 for student support and services, and 2.5 for plant services. That picks up that change in custodial services, among other things. That picks up that change in custodial services, among other things. Questions?
All right. Seeing no questions, it would now be in order to have approval on this proposal.
Madam Chair, move to approve the budget amendment as proposed.
Second? Thank you. It is moved, it is moved and approved, I'm sorry, it is moved and seconded to approve the fiscal year 2018 Comprehensive Budget Amendment I. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing no debate. Oh, yes? You're good? Okay. Hearing no debate, this will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll. Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfeld? Ms. Robinson? Yes, there is a majority in favor, and the budget amendment is approved. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It is moved and seconded to approve the items on the consent agenda. This will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond yes, those opposed will respond no. The secretary will call the roll. Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Fiero? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfeld? Ms. Robinson? Abstained. This brings us to the conclusion of the agenda for the evening, so if there's no objection, the meeting is adjourned. We do have a closed session, so would you please hurriedly go back?